Okay. Counting down to 30 seconds for start of meeting. Good morning. I'd like to call to order the March 24, 2025, regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. Please stand for the invocation from Reverend Dr. Robert G. Couch, Lead Pastor of Christ United Methodist Church on Greel Lot Road in Mobile, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord God, we come before you today with gratitude, with our opportunity to live among the church and people of Mobile County. We thank you for the blessings you have poured out.
We thank you for the blessings that you have poured out on this community, for the beauty of our land and shores, the strength of our people, and the hope that guides us forward. Lord, today we specifically lift up our commissioners, Commissioner Merceria Ludgood, Connie Hudson, and Commissioner Randall Doitt, and ask for your wisdom to guide their decisions, to grant them clarity, discernment, and a heart for service as they lead with integrity and compassion. May they seek justice, promote unity, and work for the good of all citizens. We also pray for their families, and we ask that you would bless them with peace, health, and joy, but their homes be filled with love, and may they find rest and renewal in your presence. Father, we ask for your hand of blessing to be over the people of Mobile County. May our communities flourish, and our businesses thrive, and our schools be places of learning, safety, and growth. Watch over those who are struggling, provide for those in need, and bring healing to the broken-hearted. Help us to be a people who care for one another, to seek the common good. Guide this meeting today, oh Lord, that every discussion and decision be made with wisdom, fairness, and humility. Let your peace be present among us, and may we all bring honor to you. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to add a special welcome to Rob this morning, Rob Couch, who is the Senior Pastor of my church. So it's great to have you here. Thank you.
So we have a lot going on today. We're gonna start first with our resolution, recognizing Greek Independence Day. And if Mr. Paul Platus is here, would you please?
That has been rescheduled since we were scheduled to have the flag raising this morning at 9:00 a.m., and the weather did not seem to be cooperating. We will do that in the morning at 9:00 a.m. instead.
Okay. Now we are going to make some awards to the Cozy Middle School Dance Team. They've been kicking high, and we would ask them to join us down here.
Caitlin, if you want to come on down, and you can introduce the girls real quick, and then I'll read the award.
All right. Good morning, girls. How are you guys? Congratulations. And I think your coach is gonna introduce each of you, and then I'm gonna read this resolution, and then she's gonna, I think she's written a speech that she's gonna give. Is that right? I'm kidding.
Okay. We have Lucy Bardwell, Allison Bryant, Kimberly Campbell, Leila Gier, McKinley Goldman, Haley Guzman, Emily Hanachewski, Sadie Hayes, Mary Bennett Hines, Lily Johnson, Reagan Ledger, Harper Lomenek, Ellie Mulliken, Piper Noe, Eva Rogers, Bailey Shreiner, Mackenzie Tagudar, Shay Tracy, Kendall Williams, Rosalyn Williams, and Sarah Williams.
Thank you. We have a certificate for each of you, but it's a certificate of award. And I know that you guys have worked really hard for these honors that you've received. And I found out about it through Mr. Smith. And I wanted to have you guys come down and recognize you guys. And my son goes to Cozy. He's looking for a girlfriend, so y'all. He'll be, he will be so embarrassed. But his name's Bryson. When y'all get back, y'all go find him and tell him y'all heard he was looking for a girlfriend. He's in the seventh grade. He will be so embarrassed. All right, so this is from the Mobile County Commission, and it's a certificate of award, and it has each of your names on it. We'll go through that. And it says that the individual's name has earned special recognition and is hereby granted the certificate of award for Cozy Middle School Dance Team 2024 and 2025. And this is a whole list of awards that you guys have won. So it's First Place in Palm and Hip-Hop, NDA Bama Regional Showmanship Award, UDA Magic City Dance Challenge Crowd Please Award, DTU Alabama State Championship Best Costume Award, and the D, I'm sorry, NDA National Showmanship Award. And then in honor of those awards, the county commission wanted to recognize you guys. And this is signed by all three commissioners and by the county administrator. So congratulations to each of you. Does, do any of you want to give a speech? Okay, do any of you want to dance? Y'all can dance in the atrium. How about that? I'll dance with y'all. Yeah, we're gonna take, Caitlin, you want to come up here? Okay.
Congratulations, Coach. Item three? Oh, okay. Okay, do we have any speakers other than for people speaking to item three?
Amen.
All right, Mr. Kerr.
Item one.
No, item, we're gonna start with item three.
We'll start with item three, okay. Item three, hold public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard regarding public safety concerns as to the operations of JJKJ LLC doing business as the rolling tide, also known as the Alabama Bar and Lounge located at 10071 Airport Boulevard, Mobile, Alabama, and consider taking any appropriate action.
The public hearing is now in session. I wanted to say a little bit about our process. We will have speakers for and against. We will start with, we're gonna begin and end with the person.
Mr. Johnson, Joseph Johnson.
You want to go ahead? You want to go through the process?
No, you, I just want to be sure.
Don't go ahead.
Oh, you got it. Well, we're gonna start with Mr. Johnson. I understand he is here. And in keeping with what the commission president suggested, Mr. Johnson can speak first, and Mr. Johnson will have the last word for the commission's sides. What, if any, action needs to be done? I think the speakers outside of Mr. Johnson will be limited to three minutes. Is that right? Three minutes to speak for or against on the subject?
We are actually gonna do four, four minutes. We're gonna give a one-minute warning at three to allow people to wrap up.
Mr. Johnson is the owner.
He's the owner of the establishment.
And if I may, I'd like to make a statement real quick prior to the meeting.
One more thing. We would just ask that you make your comment, any comments that you make, please make them to the commission and not back and forth. We're taking it all down, so we're gonna know what everyone has said. It's just easier for us to follow if you just direct your comments to the commission. Thank you.
I'd like to say this. I mean, I know that social media gets out of hand sometimes, and this has been portrayed as an, as a effort to close Mr. Johnson's establishment, establishment down. And that's not, this is a fact gathering mission. This is a public hearing so that people in the public can be heard about their concerns with Mr. Johnson's establishment and that Mr. Johnson can be here today to defend his establishment. Anything that's done here today, the commission will not be taking any action. We will be taking this public hearing and the information that we receive under advisement, and decisions may or may not be made in the future. And like the public hearing notice said, that could include, no offense, Mr. Johnson, but your establishment being shut down. I don't, I don't think that's what our intentions are, but also opportunity for you and me and the county attorney to sit down with the people who are here to testify today to see if there are some changes that can be made there to make them feel safe. So that's, with that being said, I think, Mr. Johnson, you have the mic.
All right. I wish I was going second so I could hear some of the complaints.
Well, you'll, you'll have an opportunity at the end to, you will, you will be the first speaker and you will be the last speaker. So you'll have an opportunity at the end to rebut anything that's said.
All right. Good morning, everybody. My name is Joseph Johnson. I am the owner of the Alabama Bar. First, I want to say my heart goes out to the victims and the families of all the acts of violence throughout our city. I'm 53 years old. I have three grown children that I have raised to be productive members of society in which my middle child is active air force. He builds planes. I'm currently on my fifth Alabama liquor license. The ABC Board does an extensive background check to ensure that they give, that they don't give a criminal or a violent person control of liquor sales. I have no criminal background, and to be completely honest, I don't have any traffic tickets either. Throughout, throughout my five liquor license terms, despite the rumors, there has been not one single underage drinking violation. Revoking my liquor license is certainly not called for. The Alabama Bar is a neighborhood sports karaoke bar. 100% of our regular customers come there just to socialize, innocent fun, to sing karaoke, play pool. Some of the men in our neighborhood who don't have wives at home, they come there and they can enjoy a home-cooked meal cooked by the bartenders at no charge. We often have benefits and charity events for people in need of help and support. So after this last unfortunate act of violence at my bar, I decided to figure out what I could do to prevent this type of situation from happening again. The location of the Alabama Bar is on the outskirts of the city, in West Mobile. After many years of operation, I realized that my place is a stop that people like to take after leaving other places in the city where they've already been drinking, consuming alcohol, having fun because it's on their way home. So what I decided to do is, on the weekends, I'm gonna close a little earlier just to deter them from stopping at my place on the way home. Most acts of violence, when it comes to the nightlife, happens after hours, after midnight. Unfortunately, these acts of violence can happen anywhere at any time. I was prepared today to read off hundreds of situations that has happened, but I'm not gonna do that. Here's just a few, and I wish the, the young dance team wasn't here to hear all this, but, these establishments, they're not responsible for these acts of violence. If we are responsible, if the establishment is responsible, responsible, then we should close all the establishments down, and I'll be the first to close. On March 1st, at Langdon Park, there was a shootout on a playground with children playing. The mall here in Mobile, it averages two or three shootings a year. In March, three people were shot at Popeyes on Government Street. March 5th, a man was killed at Palmer's Hyundai on Airport Boulevard, just down the street from my bar. There was a shooting at Pump It Up. It's a playground, it's a children's venue for, you know, gymnastics and jumping and stuff. All right, I'm not gonna go any further with that. Again, if the solution is to close everybody down, then I'll be the first to close. I'm starting to feel, I'm starting to understand what it's like to be a politician because when crime rates go up, they blame the politicians, but they only have the resources to, and the budget to do what they can to prevent it. I'm gonna do all I can to prevent any more mishaps at my place. I apologize again. I feel bad for the victims and the, and the families. That's about it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We have three people signed up additional to Mr. Johnson. The first is Mr. Ralph Sheffield. Mr. Sheffield, if you'll come down. And if you'll keep an eye on me, I'll let you with time cards.
Before I start, I want to say, Mr. Johnson, I have, I have nothing against you, but I live exactly 150 feet east of that location. Since the fireworks stands moved in, they cleared the woods and stuff.
Mr. Sheffield, excuse me, would you say your name and?
Ralph Henry Sheffield.
And your address, please, sir?
10051 C Airport Boulevard, Mobile, Alabama, 36608.
Thank you.
I wrote these things, and I'm gonna try to get through it fast because you guys don't limit our time. Two, there's two homicides known. There's a suicide that I don't think was recorded. What do you make news? Not his fault. Yes, I remember the two women crying and crying and crying. It went on for a half an hour, hour. Finally, the law showed up. They wouldn't let me go see, and I don't know the exact extent of that. But in one of the homicides, the first one, the, the kid started leaving the bar. And when I say younger, and they were running, they were walking down the road to get out of trouble because they knew where they're in trouble, the law herded them all back up. They had them out front in the grass, sitting on the ground with their hands on top of their head. Now, I gotta say this now before I forget it. The problem with the bar primarily is there's not a door man enforcer. They only have women bartenders who are not going to force a man to move. Therefore, it is not controlled. I don't know if he's thought about that or not, but there has to be, and they open at noon roughly and 4:00 in the morning. The karaoke, I gotta go and do that real quick, okay? On karaoke night, when they get lit, as you said, later and get drinking, they bring the karaoke machine outside, and the group comes out there, and I think about that Walt Disney World, the dogs are all howling together. They're all out there singing and happy and drinking. I can hear them through my window. The base of the bar, even with the door shut, shakes my windows sometimes because the volume is so high. Now, I don't go over there, and I don't complain to them. I don't talk to them. I've been in there a few times. One time, one guy was out there burning rubber. He made a smoke cloud, and it drifted over to the house. I walked to the back of the bar and I said, hey, that's enough. And the bartender said, yeah, I'm gonna call the law if you don't leave. I said, it'd be a good idea because it was out of hand. It was out of hand. It's a woman trying to run. I'm not saying females can't control things, but when it comes to the manhood thing, macho drinking, there needs to be a man there to stop that, and it doesn't exist. It hasn't, not in the six and a half years I've lived here. And I'm gonna say that, that place, that bar, the house on the Airport Boulevard I was born and raised in, 1955, where the bar is located, Mrs. Pierce ain't cash, we call her, lived there her whole life. I mean, this is my neighborhood. I, I mean, I swear I'm from. There again, I have nothing against him. Oh, the end of the bar on the south side is Retention Pond. My neighbor kind of gets flooded every time it rains because that retention pond has never been maintained since it's been there. Not his fault, the property owners. It's never been, that retention pond has never been, there's trees growing in a retention pond. I went and looked at it. A woman was getting beaten there one night, and I heard it. Now, if I was in my 30s and 40s, I might have ran over there and done something. I'm 69 now. I don't get in the middle of fights. He was slapping her around really bad, so I called the law. Finally, another woman got involved in it. I call, I timed the police. It took them 26 minutes to get there. The city, they live, they have a main office by the airport, three miles away. Tell me how fast they can get there. So I talked to an officer about this the other day. He said usually there's only one officer in there at any given time in that office. That means we're not getting representation for the money we get, meaning he's not even getting representation, meaning he's not even getting the protection that we are paying for. Y'all increased our taxes out on Schuylkill Road, took that over and all of that, so now I'm throwing at you is we need some support from the police, not just his, the whole body, okay? I've tried to talk to two. They don't even, they won't even, I've walked up to them. That area is not patrolled. When a vehicle leaves Airport Boulevard and crosses a snow road, they're doing 100 miles an hour when they pass this bar. There's been multiple wrecks at his bar where cars are coming down Airport Boulevard, multiples. Knocked the mailboxes down, we own or maintain, but the person that pulls out of the bar leaves direct. The person who was coming down Airport Boulevard knows that they would probably be guilty also, but because the person's inebriated, they haul us. They leave. This is a continuum. I got a lot more. I think she said I have 30 seconds, but, oh, yeah. I'm not even gonna bring, garbage recycle truck. They come in and they pick up the bottles, 2, 3, 4,000, 500, I don't know. When they dump that in the morning at 4:00, that garbage truck, recycle truck is empty. It wakes everybody in the neighborhood up because all those bottles hit an empty bottle metal box. You can't imagine the sound it makes. I finally, after six and a half years, have kind of adjusted to it. It surprises you. You don't know when it's gonna happen.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Sheffield.
That's it.
Thank you.
I can sing. Thank you.
We have two more speakers, commissioners. Mr. Nick McDonald. His address is 1073 Dominion Drive West.
Other commissioners.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Nick McDonald. I live at 1073 Dominion Drive West. My house is 200, 300 yards from the establishment. I serve as the president of the homeowners association for the Dominion neighborhood and was asked to come say a few words. Before doing so, I reached out to some of my neighbors to see what kind of comments they had and if I could bring some of their thoughts out. Mr. Sheffield, Mr. Sheffield hit some specifics. I'm gonna hit just summary bullet points. Since the bar's been there, we, obviously, I've already talked about two homicides, one in 2019 and one in February of this year. We've had lots of, and I don't have statistics, but we know that 911 has been called several instances at the bar quite often, quite often. There've been multiple bar fights reported and disturbances from the parking lot. One of our former residents was a renter, and I don't have his name because he moved on several years ago. He went to the bar, and he got beat up and claimed that he really didn't instigate anything. He was, he was just in the wrong place at the wrong time. There's been reports of underage drinking. I know there's, that's gonna be an issue. If you read the news story of the homicide in February, the attorney said that the shooter was underage and left the premises, I think, before the incident took place. So all I know is the news story. I don't have any facts, but it would sound like he was underage and was a patron of the bar. I've heard in talking to Commissioner Doitt and some of my neighbors that there's reports of DUIs that have happened there. Mr. Sheffield has supported that a little bit as well. Not too long ago, and this is not the establishment's fault, but there was a car break-in. A young high school or middle-aged student was breaking into cars, and the police were, you know, going through our neighborhood looking for him. And that just happened to happen on the property, probably not even when the bar was open. And again, Mr. Sheffield, and some of my neighbors complained about loud music, lots of things happening. You can hear it from my house when I'm outside. I go inside. I'm lucky enough. I'm far enough away, have a little bit of barriers. If I close my doors, I don't hear it as much. But the neighbors on the far side have complained that they can hear it regularly. You know, it's a lot of little things that collectively add up to a bad reputation. And I remember, we had several discussions when the bar was, before the bar was open, we were concerned that, hey, somebody's gonna open up a bar on Airport Boulevard by our neighborhood. And they asked my opinion. I said, really? If we don't have a bad reputation that we know of, I don't know what we can do about it to stop anything. Well, today, this hearing is a, is a good forum that we have now a bad reputation. And I think safety is a concern that we should, you know, we want to bring to your attention and ask you to consider it deeply and see if there's actions we can take to make things a better, more safe establishment or, or close it, whatever you decide to do. But just to make sure our neighborhood remains safe. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
And we have one other speaker, Mr. Ryan Lindsay.
My name is Ryan Lindsay. My address is three, three, three Laura Court, Mobile, Alabama.
I'm sorry, what was your address?
Three, three, three Laura Court. On January twenty-seventh last year, about six-thirty in the evening, I was victim of hit and run by a patron from that establishment. This was a nearly brand-new truck that that person was driving. Had to be leaving the bar at about forty miles an hour in rush hour traffic. Collided broadside on me, destroyed my truck, left me with permanent damage in my neck. I spent months going through physical therapy. I'm not healed. I reached out to speak to someone at the bar. A female answered the phone. I spoke with her. Asked her who might be, who might have been there that evening driving a blue full-size truck leaving the establishment about six-thirty. She said that she would check into the receipts, check into the cameras, and get back to me. I gave her two days. I called back. My phone number had been blocked. That is not helping your community. If something goes wrong at your establishment, you owe it to your community to offer the information that's needed to bring justice, not block the calls, ignore your people. That bar does not have a good reputation. The people around my community know that that is a shady place to go. It is an establishment known as a dive bar. I did not prepare anything to say today. I'm just winging this. Certainly, there are efforts that the owner of this, of this establishment can take to make things better, such as not staying open till four AM, two AM. At any given hour now, anybody could just be screaming tires out of the bar, recklessly entering traffic, as what happened to me. I'm left with PTSD from this. I get nervous in traffic. I'm fearful for my son, who just turned sixteen. And now that we have this young group of dancers here, who in a few short years will probably be traveling in that same vicinity any given time of the day, something needs to be done. Thank you.
Sir, did I unders- I'm assuming it was a LSA or the other driver left the scene of the accident that you were injured in?
Correct. They fled the scene.
Have they ever, has there been an arrest made or?
Not that I'm aware.
The Mobile Police Department or the state troopers?
Mobile Police showed up, fire showed up. I asked them if they could go talk with anybody at the bar. They just shook their head and they said, we've been here several times. They're no help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up? Then would you like Mr. Johnson to come back?
Mr. Johnson? I, I didn't ask you for your name and address when you first spoke. Would you just give it?
Yes, Joseph Johnson, uh, one, three, 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 three Hugh Fort Road in Grande. Okay, um. This is my first time hearing about us having karaoke outside. We've never had karaoke outside, so, um, I've never heard that. Um, our, our speaker system is inside and it's not really powerful. There's, when you pull up to my bar, you actually have to listen real hard to see if we're even open because you can't hear any music in my parking lot. Now, if maybe there's a band going on a special occasion, maybe on the weekend, if we have a band, sometimes bands can be loud, but our karaoke is not, it's not really loud. And most of the time, when you hear music at our place, it's karaoke. We don't want those voices super loud. Some good singers, but most of them, you don't wanna hear them too loud. I'm sorry about the retention pond. I don't, I don't know, I really don't know too much about it. There is a privacy fence that separates my place from the neighborhood. Now, we are located on Airport Boulevard. The neighborhood is pretty much just a few hundred feet from Airport Boulevard. So if a truck rides by that has a really loud muffler system, it's, they're gonna hear it. If they have, um, bass in their vehicles, when they ride by, they're gonna hear it. It's not coming from my parking lot. If there is someone in my parking lot that is making too much noise or peeling wheels when they leave, we say something to them about it and that's all we can do. I'm sorry about the accident you was in. Um, we do have a, a really good camera system. Our security system is open for anybody that needs to come and look at our cameras at any time. When the, uh, when the kid walked through the parking lot, he came from the neighborhood. He walked through my parking lot. It was on my camera system. I gave it, I gave the tape to the owner of the car and the detective. They were able to see exactly where the kid came from. He broke into a car and he kept on going. He never came in the bar. And I'm sorry that everybody, you know, I'm sorry you guys went through that and I don't, I don't know what else to say. I'm gonna do all I can to make, make some changes within my budget to make it, to keep some of these things from happening. But again, if there was a one-hundred percent proof solution, I would do it. I'd be first on board, so. Thank you.
I would like to make a couple more statements since the hearing. Number one, let me clarify that Mr. Sheffield lives on the east side of your property. There is no privacy fence between your property and Mr. Sheffield's property, um, on the east side, yes. For Wakefield, you are correct. There is a, there is a privacy fence. Um, I'd also like to say this, adding to what I said earlier. I don't, I, I don't represent Bel Air Mall, okay? That's in the city. Langham Park is in the city. And, and this isn't, I'm just clarifying some things that you said. The purpose of this meeting, the reason that I called it, is because the people that I represent in southwest Mobile County, particularly in West Mobile, are concerned for their safety. You, your establishment, I have texted the sheriff, is the only establishment, establishment in my district and the county where there's been a homicide this year. Just to clarify, I'm not running your business in the ground. I'm just telling you, I don't have any control over Bel Air Mall or Langham Park or these other establishments that you referred to earlier. If I did and these were issues are going on there and I was getting complaints, I would certainly do the same thing there that I'm doing here today. This is, like I said at the beginning, this is a public hearing to gather facts. And I, I appreciate the, the public being here. I, I know there's some other people here that don't feel comfortable speaking, but I appreciate you guys being here that live adjacent to the property. And, um, we're, we're taking this all under advisement and we'll, we'll probably have more meetings in the future to discuss a, a plan of action.
The public hearing is now closed. Thank you for your participation.
Mr. Johnson, now that the public hearing's over, I just wanna say, um, bringing Brian Roberts down here as a character witness, probably it the best thing you could have done today. I'm, I'm kidding.
Would you pull your, make sure your mouth, your mic is closed, so we're having some trouble. Some of it's sounding garbled, particularly from there, so. Do we sound garbled?
Everything that comes.
And the speakers do too.
This, I think it's an acoustics problem that may need to be addressed because I don't think it's a microphone problem, but when people are particularly at that microphone speaking, it's very muffled. Maybe it is that microphone, but I don't know.
Okay. You can go ahead, Mr. Crow.
Item one, approve a list of claims.
Some move.
Second.
Two, hold public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against. Any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
The public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers for or against? Hear none. The public hearing is now closed.
Item three was already held. Item four, hold public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed substantial amendment to the program year two thousand twenty-four action plan for the home program. This information has been available to the public since February twelfth.
Were there any speakers for or against? Hear none. The public hearing is now closed.
Five, adopt substantial amendment to the program year two thousand twenty-four action plan for the home program following the comment period and public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
Six, rescind action of the Mobile County Commission in the January twenty-seventh minutes, agenda item twenty-two, approving amendment to sub-recipient agreement with Housing First for rapid rehousing services under the Emergency Solutions Grant to extend the term from January thirty-first to May thirty-first.
Some move.
Second.
Seven, approve professional services agreement with Catalyst in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for rebuilding indexes in the landmark database along with creating a maintenance job that will rebuild indexes regularly.
Some move.
Second.
Eight, authorize letter of support to the Alabama State Council of, of, on the arts on behalf of Strickland Youth Center for grant application for its Strickland Youth Center courtroom mural and children's gallery project.
Some move.
Second.
Has the letter been drafted?
More commissioners, yes, we've drafted the letter.
Thank you. Just, I don't wanna submit a deadline.
Nine, authorize grant application to Alabama State Council on the Arts for funding on behalf of Strickland Youth Center courtroom mural and children's gallery project.
Some move.
Second.
Ten, approve declaration of restrictive covenants, release of existing flood claims and waiver of future flood claims by any current or subsequent owners of the burning property located at thirty-seven eighty River Road in Theodore by the Andley Family Irrevocable Trust.
Some move.
Second.
Eleven, approve application of Sherudy Corporation for lounge retail liquor license, class-two license for Owl's Liquor on Howes Ferry Road in, in Sims.
Some move.
Second.
Twelve, approve grant agreement from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the Stop Violence Against Women Act prosecution program in the amount of forty-one thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents with a local match of thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and one cent and authorize execution of all associated documents.
Some move.
Second. Can I, can I ask a question? I'm, it's on my mind. Number ten, Tina, what is, was that, is that yours? Who is that? Who's handled that and what are we, what exactly are we doing?
And I worked on, we settled a flooding claim with this gentleman in return, in part, he agreed that himself and subsequent owners of the property, if any, could never again sue the county. So disputed claim and settlement.
What was the, uh, declaration of restrictive covenants?
That, that, that's the covenant that would run with the land. It would be recorded. We have a release. We also have the restrictive covenant that would go with the land so that if this gentleman sells it to Jay Ross, I'll be subject to that restrictive covenant. So a subsequent owner cannot sue again the county.
Like a deed restriction that, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, I understood what we were doing. I just wanted to make sure what that covenants was, make sure that there was some kind of deed restriction that if in the future we weren't liable. Thank you.
That era of doing that started when, uh, the lady in the middle was the staff attorney. It's been held quite successfully over the years.
Mr. Ross, we have no idea what you're saying. Please put your, all right.
Can you start, can you start over? We didn't hear you.
I cannot start over.
You don't remember what you said, do you?
I remember exactly what I said.
Eddie, sorry, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to get a little clarification on that agenda item. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thirteen, approve sponsorship agreement with Jack and Jill of America, Mobile Chapter, in the amount of one thousand dollars from District One education funds for its laybutilian military dinner dance.
Some move.
Second.
Fourteen, approve appropriation contract with Spencer Westlon Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from District Two education funds for kindergarten, classroom furniture, and achievement engagement awards for Spencer Westlon Elementary School.
Some move.
Second.
Fifteen, approve sponsorship agreement with the University of South Alabama Jag Gals in the amount of one thousand from District Two education funds for its brunch and bingo fundraiser.
Some move.
Second.
Sixteen, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents from District One education funds to help support Callaway Smith Middle School Band Program.
Some move.
Second.
Seventeen, approve sponsorship agreement with the Community Foundation of South Alabama in the total amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for its annual luncheon with funds divided as follows.
Some move.
Second.
Eighteen, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Medical Museum in the total amount of five thousand dollars for educational programs with funds divided as follows.
Some move.
Second.
Nineteen, approve appropriation contract with Mary B. Austin Elementary School Parent Teacher Association in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from District Two education funds to purchase and install an outdoor LED message sign for Mary B. Austin Elementary School.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty, approve sponsorship agreement with Africatown Plateau Placers in the amount of one thousand dollars from District One education funds for its annual Women's Empowerment Spring Tea.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-one, authorize acceptance of transfer of conservation land from the Nature Conservancy to the Mobile County Commission and authorize execution of all associated documents.
Some move.
Should we, Tina, I know I asked about this Thursday, but should there be a legal description or, uh, if there's a physical address in, for, in this agenda item? I know where it's at, but.
The, the land is yet to be transferred. Uh, and this is part of a grant agreement requirement between the Department of Conservation and the Nature Conservancy.
So this, it's a specific piece of property?
It is. It's described in their grant agreement that it's in the backup documentation.
In the gr- uh, grant agreement. Okay, thank you.
There's an exhibit.
I just didn't know if it needed to be in the agenda item itself, and that's fine, if it's in the agreement.
The grant agreement just requires the county acknowledge. The grant agreement just requires the county acknowledge, agree to accept it once it is acquired.
Thank you, second.
Twenty-two, approve contract amendment number ten to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Watermark Design Group to add boardwalk inspection for Mobile River, Delta Marina, and Campground.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-three, approve contract amendment number two to the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan Contract with Stokes Consulting Group to add general implementation support for the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan and technical support for the multiple property documentation form project for the Civil Rights Movement in Mobile. This amendment will also extend the period of performance to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, with no additional cost.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-four, approve resolution approving application of Turnerville Water and Fire Protection District to amend its Certificate of Incorporation pursuant to Alabama Code to amend the district service area.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-five, approve three-year service agreement with Birmingham HAD and Tallow Company for cooking oil recovery in Mobile County Parks at no cost to the county.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-six, consider taking the following action on bids.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-seven, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Claris International in the amount of two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars for filemaker database of juvenile detention records for the James T. Strickland Youth Center.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-eight, approve renewal of subscription agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of eighteen thousand sixty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents for lease query standard package records up to two hundred and forty-three for the County Commission.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-nine, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with Unity Fiber in the amount of four thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and two cents for two core routers for the County Commission.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty, approve renewal of licensed subscription agreement with TSA in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-four cents for the VM Data Platform Advanced Universal for the County Commission.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-one, approve annual renewal of licensed subscription with, subscription agreement with Unity Fiber in the amount of five thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents for Cisco Webex for the County Commission.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve renewal of agreement with Think Guard in the total amount of eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and four cents for Cisco Secure Email Cloud Advantage in the total amount of nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, and Cisco Enhanced Support for Cisco Email Security in the amount of one thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents for the County Commission.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-three, approve renewal of maintenance and support agreement with Linear Systems in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars for DIMMs software equipment for the Sheriff's Office.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-four, approve renewal of maintenance agreement with Timekeeping Systems in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars for Guard One Real-Time at Metro Jail.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-five, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Rec Desk in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for Rec Desk Recreation and Parks Software for County Parks.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-six, approve renewal of service agreements with Terminex Commercial for Liquid Defend Systems at Camp One in the amount of five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-five cents, and James T. Strickland Youth Center in the amount of six hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-five cents.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-seven, approve amending the two thousand nineteen capital improvement plan to create project Whistler Bikes Bicycle Trail. The budget for this project is in the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-four cents. This amendment creates the project and allocates the funding for the bot, for the budget from the two thousand nineteen capital improvement plan.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-eight, approve grant agreement from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the Stop Violence Against Women Act Prosecution Program in the amount of thirty-four thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents, with a local match in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and five dollars and sixty-seven cents, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-nine, approve agreement with Alabama Power Company to provide power for six new streetlights at Roundabout, at New Roundabout Intersection, Howes Ferry Road, at Fire Tower Road.
Some move.
Second. Did that open this weekend?
Is that the one that just opened?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That was quick, quick work. I saw a video and a, I guess Cherie had posted some stuff on ribbon cutting.
As roundabouts goes, it's very nice looking.
Yeah. And it was, uh, done pretty quickly.
And I know the residents are more than happy to finally have it open, so thank you all for all your work. It's done.
Second, I, if I didn't.
Forty, approve adopt-a-mile program application from Rocky Freeman at the Rock and Roll Offs for the adoption of a segment of Schillinger Road North from two thousand thirty-five Schillinger Road North to fourteen oh one Schillinger Road North.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-one, approve preliminary plat only of Southwood Subdivision.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-two, adopt preliminary and final plat of Lumpkin Place First Edition and preliminary and final plat of Elsie Place, and preliminary and final plat of Gaston, Gaston Acres.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-three, approve final plat only of Theodore Crossing.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-three, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the property owners for the below-listed projects as follows.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-five, award bid to HCL Contracting for Project City of Creola Streets, Hurst Drive, Gray Drain Basin Pave, for their low bid in the amount of three hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-six, award bid to Gibson Construction Services for Project City of Pritchard Streets, Wasan Avenue Bridge Replacement, for their low bid in the amount of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty cents.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-seven, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement in the total amount of one thousand seven hundred dollars for Project Bass Drive, Brim Drive, and Stripe Drive, Gray Drain Basin Pave, to be divided as follows.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-eight, approve assigning contract for professional engineering services for Project Georgia Avenue West Gray Drain Basin Pave to Macquarie and Williams.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-nine, accept report from the county engineer pertaining to the petition for the private road dirt road maintenance for Deborah Lane and Roger Road. In accord with Act two thousand nineteen dash three oh seven, the commission may consider funding the preliminary engineering cost in the total amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy linear feet of qualifying roadway.
Just, uh, to reiterate, reiterate what the question that I asked, uh, in our conference meeting, this, there will be conversations with those property owners before the county expends funds, correct? On this, just to make sure that they are interested in paying their portion that's required.
We will sit and have conversations with them. The hard part is coming up with a number to give them, because without design, we don't really know the cost of all these things, but we can at least have the conversation and let them know that there is expenses coming on their part for the different things.
And at least give them a ballpark idea of what that could entail.
Yes, ma'am, we should be able to do that.
So they will know if they're interested in going forward before we expend-
Mm-hmm.
-whatever it costs to get that engineering work done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Some move.
Second.
Fifty, approve assigning contract for professional engineering services for Project Bellengrave Road Safety Improvements Phase Two to Kimley, Horn, and Associates.
Some move.
Second.
Fifty-one, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement on Morse Road in the total amount of seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars for Project Morse Road Gray Drain Basin Pave, to be divided as follows.
Some move.
Second.
And commissioners, we have two add-ons this morning. Add-on number one, authorize execution of release of claims form for the Mount Vernon Project as required by Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Sub-Award Agreement.
Some move.
Second.
Add-on number two, approve intergovernmental agreement between Mobile County and the City of Mobile to provide funding to the city in the total amount of seven million five hundred thousand dollars to be paid annually over a ten-year period in the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for fiscal years two thousand twenty-six and twenty-seven, and eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars, eight hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal years two thousand twenty-eight to, to two thousand thirty-five, payable on October first of each year for the design, construction, and other costs of the new Mobile Civic Center, subject to final legal review.
Some moved.
Second.
And just a comment to go along with that, you know, I don't think, at least on my part, and, and I can speak for myself, there was ever any intention not to, in some way, be a partner in this endeavor. I think we all want to see the, the new Civic Center arena be successful and, and live up to expectations. Uh, it was the, but at the same time, we have a fiduciary obligation and a responsibility to the county to make sure that, uh, that we don't overextend and don't ob, overobligate ourselves, that we can't pay for the obligations that we currently have in place. So there was some question about the length of time that it took to get to reach this point, and, uh, there was, the reason, we are trying to be very careful in expenditure of funds, uh, so that we can continue as we go forward to honor the obligations we have, and hopefully be able to still participate when we need to in economic development initiatives. So, uh, that would be the message along with this, that I would make sure that the city understands.
Item fifty-two, commission announcements and/or comments.
Just congratulations to, um, um, animal shelter staff and public corporations, whoever worked on this adoption event during the weekend, that was pretty spectacular, and I, I hope that, um, this kind of event makes clear that the, uh, county is just committed to doing whatever it can to ensure the, the safety and viability of the animals that come into our care. And this, I hope that this will be the first of many such events.
Second, that, very good.
And as a reminder, there is an indigent care board meeting following this. Item fifty-three, approve request for motion to adjourn until April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Some move.
Second.
I'd like to call to order the March twenty-four, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Mobile County Indigent Care Board.
One, approve minutes of the meeting of February twenty-fourth.
Some move.
Second.
Two, accept report from Mobile County Commission of the balance in the indigent care fund as of February twenty-eighth. Funds available, two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-four cents.
Some move.
Second.
Three, approve request for motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Before we adjourn from the indigent care board meeting, I've asked this numerous times, and it's nobody's fault that I haven't gotten an answer other than my, probably my own. Who adminis, who's the administrator, or who are, who administers the indigent care board for the Mobile County Commission and on our staff? Is that, is that a position that somebody on our staff administers, or is there somebody who, okay?
Commissioner, we account for the funds. There's a inter-agency agreement between the, um, Mobile Infirmary, I believe, USA, um, Alta Point, can't think of who else. Um, they have their own agreement that they come up with internally, they negotiate and determine the rate, and based on the amount we collect, then we remit based on that agreement. So we just collect the funds and then distribute the funds.
Is there a, is there a board that's been established or appointed that determines how these funds are spent? I, I've just had some questions about this.
We're that board.
We're the board. So, I, I mean, I know that we approve the funds that are available, I've never seen a request that we've approved for allocations from that funding source.
Yeah, there is, there is a document, and I will forward that to you.
Yeah, or, or if you don't mind, when you get a minute, let's sit down and talk about it.
Okay.
I just got a couple of questions.
Yeah, no worries.
It was negotiated and agreed among all parties that are receiving the funding.
Yes.
And so we just, we basically administer that.
Yeah. Just curiosity more than anything.
No problem.
I'll give us, uh, a second to adjourning. Sorry.
All righty.
We adjourn?
We're adjourn-
I'm thinking about it.
Oh, okay.
We stand adjourned.
We need to give you a gavel.
Please, please stay, stay warm, stay safe. We have some inclement weather out there.
It ain't, it's, but it's not cold outside.
Hopefully it's cleared up by now. Supposed to be nice.
Well, that's why-